You are recording, so you're ready to open up the meeting now.
Eric, can you still hear me? Because I cannot hear you.
We can hear you, Mr. Figurito. You can't hear me?
Can you hear me, Joe? Can you hear me now?
Can you, can you hear me, Mr. Figurito?
Hit refresh, Mr. Figurito. I'll type him in the chat, Carrie. Thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Yes, we are. I am.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, residents of the town of Dayton. This is the Town of Dayton Planning Board. Regular meeting slash public hearing held remotely Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, 6:00 P.M. And this is a revised agenda. Due to the increasing concerns surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting slash public hearing will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do so using the methods listed below. Video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local TV9 at a later date. There will be no live recording of the meeting, and it will be available on the Town of Dayton YouTube channel, which can be accessed using this link, www.youtube.com backslash Town of Dayton Planning and Land Use. Again, that is www.youtube.com backslash Town of Dayton Planning and Land Use. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Contact our office at k Easterday@Dayton-mas.gov. Use the email subject line "Regular Meeting, November 18th, 2020, Public Input", and include your name and address for the record. Or you may call 508-669-6431, extension 114. During the meeting, leave a voicemail if necessary. I've called the meeting to order. If everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance by the United States of America. In good republic, forged in stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, law. Thank you, John Lynn. And ladies involved this evening, right now, I'd just like to mention that we have one member who is not present this evening. That is Mr. Robert Boner, and he is excused. He's on vacation. Gentlemen of the board, I would like to have, I would entertain a motion to confirm the next meeting date of November 18th. Of, I'm sorry, is that correct?
Today is the 18th.
Yeah, my apologies. That will be for December 2nd.
December 2nd. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to confirm the next meeting date of December 2nd of 2020.
Make a motion to confirm that.
I'll second.
Motion has been made, right? Here, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion on the meeting date of November, I'm sorry, December 2nd of 2020? With that being said, gentlemen, let's vote by roll. Mr. Figurito.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's aye. So the next meeting day, gentlemen, again, is December 2nd of 2020. Move on to Agenda Item Number 4A, which is to review Discuss an Act on the Hunter's Hill subdivision modification request to the special permit slash definitive subplan subdivision plan. M-21 lots 6, 6A, 7A, 23, 37 through 46, M-22, L-5, 6-0, M-23, and L-18. So gentlemen, everyone's had an opportunity. You've had your packets to overlook everything. Before we begin this discussion, I would just like to state that I had a meter. I had a meeting with Mr. Castignetti and also Mr. Perry and Mr. Perry's residents. And that was a discussion that we had in regards to what the board was looking for amenities to be located at this subdivision, because they are not going to build a golf course. So after discussion with Mr. Castignetti and Mr. Perry, they brought these, that information to, right now, the residents who are getting together to form their HOA. Now, everyone has the letter in their packets, and the letter will state that they're going to construct a one-story, of course, community center with a building to be no less than 3200 square feet, finished exterior space, an outdoor heated pool that we requested with a surrounding deck, one pickleball court, one boxy court, one chuffing board court, a well-groomed Level 1 area with games such as beating bad toss and other games, two gazebos, with one to be located there on the attached plant. So you're going to see a plan. There's going to be one gazebo on the plan in that one location. Now, the residents have asked for a second gazebo, which will be placed on the property at a different location, and that will be determined by the homeowners. Now, they're also going to do 4,000 linear feet of walking trails, also to be located within the grounds of the facility. Now, there will also be a level gravel parking surface for the seasonal storage of RVs and boats to be located to show on the attached plant. So with that being said, Mr. Castignetti, I'm going to open the floor to you, sir, this evening, if you may.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, well, that pretty much summed up everything we had discussed, presented that the homeowners, that I had reviewed and discussed with the homeowner representative, which, which everybody is in agreement. I understand that that's going to be treated as a, that portion of it, yep, the amendment to the special permit is a, is a major modification that will be treated at such, at the December 16th meeting. And that we're hoping to deal with a minor modification of the extension of provision condition number 12 in the approval of the definitive plan, which with the three-year period already having significantly expired. And we would be looking for the board to agree to allow us a five-year period from the issuance of the 35th building permit. And the reason for that briefly, the, there are no further building permits allowed to be issued until the sewer treatment facility is operational. And from the time we get that permitted, which is in the works right now with DEP, we're not closing on the property until we have that permit in place. And we're talking about a minimum of at least six months for the construction of the sewer treatment facility. So it would be at least a six-month downtime after we take title before we can even obtain our first building permit. So we'd like that to be, as you can understand, so we're not wasting away, you know, permitting time while there's essentially nothing we can do to build inside the project for home. And we're looking at this as a five-year build-out at 21 homes per year. So that's why I'd be asking for the five-year period from the time when we can actually obtain that first building permit forward.
Gentlemen, I know that everyone's had an opportunity to read Mr. Castignetti's email that he sent to our office manager. Now, his, his is the understanding that since the first part that he's asking for is just a minor modification to the plans, okay? And I'm sure he'll get into condition number five shortly, but we're going to act on condition number 12 now, gentlemen, if you would. As I say, everyone's had an opportunity to look at the plans, and he's asking for an extension to be five years for the build-out from the date we approved, if we approved this tonight for the extension. Now, understanding that Mr. Castignetti in conversations told me that he would like to build out some of the infrastructure first, leading up to that, to the sewer treatment plant itself. So that would be involved on the major modification end of things and not on the first part of what we're discussing now. Am I correct, Mr. Castignetti?
That is correct. Yes. Yes.
Thank you, sir. So gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Am I going to go first?
Absolutely.
Okay. Originally, we had talked about a one-year from the first permit. And I understand the six months is a setback for you. How do the people that are there now, how do they feel about the three-year period?
Well, I think everybody recognizes that there's 106 lots left to complete. So I don't think anybody's expecting the 106 lots to be built in six months or a year.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the, you know, for you to get started on all of the amenities there, what, what, what are three years?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not looking for three years on the construction of the amenities. We're, we're, we're planning on starting the amenities immediately, once we take title. We, we were asking on the amenities, we were asking for a timeframe of one year from the date of the first permit, correct? We will have that built in one year. We plan on starting the three elements for the, for the community to continue. There are no further building permits available until the sewer treatment facility is up and running.
Okay.
Fully operational, that 34, your, your decision limits building permits to 34. 34 building permits have now been issued. So there are no further building permits available until that plant is, is fully operational.
Okay. I'm okay. I understood it now.
Okay.
Okay.
So when we, when we take title, we plan on building immediately the sewer treatment facility, the community center, and the surrounding amenities to go along with that, and a, the first section of infrastructure, roadway and utilities and the like, to service the first, first two phases of 21 lots each. So we'd be providing enough infrastructure, so we'd have enough of Phase 1 and be able to roll each phase thereafter without having to start from scratch. So that's why we'd be building enough infrastructure to service 40, 40 more lots. Two, two years' worth of, of building, of the home.
Mr. Woods, do you have any questions?
That's why we're only asking, that's why we're only asking for one year on the community center.
Okay.
Correct. That's in the, that's in the mail that was sent out.
Yes.
Mr. Woods, do you have any questions of Mr. Castignetti?
I don't really have any issues with granting the five-year extension, but I would like a better idea of, let's say you're going to build 21 houses per year. Is that what you were saying, sir?
That, that's, that's our game plan, you know, obviously, you know, we can't control conditions in the marketplace. They, they could change, they could make it quicker, they could make it slower, you know, it's.
Okay.
But that is, that is our game plan. Yes.
All right. Could we maybe put a stipulation in that there would not be another building permit issued after the first 21 houses unless all the amenities are done? Is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, you know, I know you have to make money, and you got to keep the ball rolling.
It's a, it's a two-edged sword, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we can put something in there after the first set of 21 homes. If all the amenities are not finished by then, then there'll be no more building permits until they're finished.
Absolutely reasonable, based on what I've represented to you. If, if I wasn't applying, which I wasn't, then that, that's more than reasonable.
Right. I mean, we, we basically did the same thing years ago with Stonegate, but we won't get into that. But we said that they had to build the playground after the 20th home was built. So right away, they wanted to build the 21st house, and they didn't want to put in the playground. So we held their feet to the fire, and it worked out.
We, we won't, I won't come to you with that request. Trust me. We will.
Okay, so somewhere in the wording, we can put that language.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Gavalo, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Nothing in addition, but I also support what Mr. Woods proposed there, and I do like that protection in place for my residents.
I would agree. So at this time, Mr. Woods, if you'd like, Mr. Figurito, do you have any comment on Mr. Woods's statements?
I like that.
Gentlemen, Mr. Woods, if you would, please make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the, I don't know what you call the, the building for the next five years, and with a stipulation stating that there will no other building permits issued until after the 21st home is built and the amenities are all included.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Easterday, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Can I just, can I interject for a moment?
Sure.
I, I think you want to make that after the 55th home is built. There are, there are already 34 homes built.
Correct.
So it would be 21 in, unless you separate it out, 21 homes in addition to the existing 34. However you want to word it, just so it's clear from.
However you want to word it.
Yeah, from the point we're at.
Right.
Yeah.
You want to go with the 55th home?
Yeah, it'd be the 56th building permit. Will not be, no, no permits beyond the 55th.
So, Mr. Woods, if you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to state that there will be no further building permits issued until the amenities are complete after the 56th home is built.
55th.
55th.
I will.
Do I hear?
That's.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Figurito. Any further discussion on the motion by Mr. Woods? Hearing none, let's vote by roll. Mr. Figurito.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's aye. That's carries four, nothing. Thank you. We're going to move on to condition.
Chairman Ryan, Chairman Ryan, can I just address Mr. Castignetti for one second? Did we want, so we definitely wanted to move forward with a public hearing on December 16th? And you'll be submitting a complete application in time for that?
When do you need it by?
Well, it needs to be posted in the paper on the 8th and the 1st, and of course, with the holiday. That kind of throws a wrinkle in everything. So I would need it by the 23rd, by the 24th. They would have to. I'd like to have it on the 23rd. If that's a little too soon, we can push it a little bit later if you want.
No, 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 no. Is that, is that, is the form on, online? Is that available online?
It is. They are, they are available online, but if you'd like, I'll be in the office tomorrow. If you want to connect tomorrow, and you and I can go through it.
Okay.
And make sure you have everything that's needed.
Yeah, I will absolutely get that in, get that back to you with the fee, with whatever fee is, the requisite fee, get that back to you on time, so it doesn't hold anything up on your end.
Yeah, that's Monday then, right? Monday, the 23rd?
Yes.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Okay, great. So we'll chat tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman Ryan, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Easterday. Gentlemen, we're going to move on to the next issue. That's condition number five. And condition number five is on the agenda this evening because that was a, going to be an 18-hole golf course. It was going to be located on the property, and the gentlemen and the homeowners have decided that they do not want a golf course, and that's where the amenities, the amenities have been presented to us that we voted on earlier. So Mr. Castignetti and also the residents know that we must hold a public hearing. And Mr. Castignetti will present that paperwork into our administrative assistant for a public hearing. We'll do all the, a lot of notifications as such. And we'll make sure that the residents, of course, and Mr. Castignetti has all the Zoom information for our next meeting, so they can attend and be able to weigh in on the issue. So gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion that condition number five is going to be a major modification. It will have a public hearing on, Carrie, again, the date one time?
December 16th.
On December 16th, the public hearing for, excuse me, just for a second. So I'm going to entertain a motion that we hold a public hearing on December 18th for the Hunter's Hill subdivision major modification request for a definitive site plan located at M-21 lots 6, 6A, 7A, 23, 37 through 46, M-22, L-5, 6-0 to M-23 and L-18.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second by Mr. Figurito. Any further discussion on a public hearing for Hunter's Hill subdivision? Hearing none, let's vote by roll. Mr. Figurito.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's aye. So everyone who's attended this evening from the Hunter's Hill subdivision, if you'd like to, you could reach out to our office manager, and she'll make sure that you guys have all the Zoom information for the public hearing that's going to be held in December. Is everyone in agreement from the subdivision with that? If you could just say aye.
Aye, yeah. May I ask one question, as I'm totally unfamiliar with this? When you say a public hearing, is that also any resident of the town of Dayton or just the residents from Hunter's Hill?
It would be the abutis, the, it would be the abutis that surround the subdivision itself, and anyone who lives in the side of the subdivision also could attend.
Okay, okay. So it's, it's this whole general area. All right. Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Faden?
Aye.
I'm sorry, that's Mr. Hayden. I see P. Hayden. I'm sorry. Thank you. And anyone else present this evening from, Mr. Rodriguez? I'm sorry, sir.
Aye, yes. Thank you.
Great. So we look forward to seeing everyone in December. Again, Carrie, just reach out to Mr. Castignetti. I'm sure he'll send in all the pertinent information. And of course, all of our applications are online. Lee, with that being said, anything else you'd like to add before you leave this evening?
Just, I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe, and I look forward to seeing you on the 16th. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. You're all, you're family. Thank you. And that's everyone up there in Hunter's Hill. Thank you very much. Thanks again for attending.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Gavalo, I'm going to, I'm going to move on to Agenda Item 4B, and this is Review Discuss an Act on the Site Plan Review for the Dayton Trails Committee, 0 Commissar Avenue, MAP 17, lots 22 and 23. I'd like to let the residents of town know that we have a member of the Trails Committee who also serves in the planning board, and Mr. Gavalo will be recusing himself from any vote of the planning board, but he will be representing the Dayton Trails Committee. The floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I was going to recommend we take it out of order if we want to do C first, or we could just do this first. It's up to you.
Um, yeah, I don't want to keep Clear Energy Online any longer than they have to. I know they're.
That's what I was thinking.
Parts of the country, great thought, Mr. Gavalo. So, gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion to take Agenda Item 4C out of order.
I'll second, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made. Second, any further discussion on taking Agenda Item 4C out of order? So let's vote by roll. Mr. Figurito.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's aye. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 4C, that's Review Discuss an Act on the Project Design Revision Review for Clearway Energy Group LLC, 0 William Street, MAP 11, lots 8-01 and 9. Who's representing Clearway this evening?
It's Scott Matthews.
Good evening, Mr. Matthews. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, I believe we also have Jennifer Sherwood joining me this evening as.
That's right, and we also have Juliette and Steve from TRC.
Yes.
Hello, again.
I would defer to Jennifer and Juliette to start from here.
Of course, yes. So as you recall from our previous meeting, our intent here is to present some changes that have resulted in the site plan, the special use permit that was issued in 2018. These changes, the changes include a reduction of impacts associated with consolidating the transmission line, and in addition to making some adjustments to Stormwater Basin that was previously permitted, so that it's now located within our leak and fence line. And so from there, I just welcome the board to ask any questions, and we'd be happy to answer anything you have. Our goal tonight is the intent of seeking a, an approval on what we're constituting these as minor modifications to the special permit plans dated 2018, and the goal of putting them as part of the plan, yeah, the plan set up for, for the special permit.
Thank you, Mrs. Sherwood. So, Ms. Juliette, would you like to add anything before I go to the members for any questions?
No, Jennifer has covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, I'm going to open up the floor to any member who'd like to ask a question of Ms. Sherwood.
I would like to see Peter Williams, if he could, say how he feels about this.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Williams, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I have reviewed the calculations and the changes to the plans. I actually attended a Zoom meeting yesterday afternoon, and they went over the changes with me, and we had some discussions on the plans. I feel that there's, you know, very little changes to the plan. There's no change in the concrete pads or, you know, significant change in the layout of the site. The only thing is really in the detention basin area. And I would just, I haven't seen, I had one question in, on the plans. Is that on the revised, the new basin design utilizes a bottom elevation of 141, and I've asked them to show that as a contour on the permit plans. And other than that, I have no other, you know, comments on this. So I don't, I have not seen revised plans, though.
Yeah, so, Peter, thank you again, once for your time and then your, your comments on that. So the revised plans are, well, and I can defer to Scott Matthews on timing of that. We couldn't get the revisions in time for this meeting. And then with consideration to what I've learned to be a very firm 48-hour rule, we wanted to be, you know, cognizant of the fact that we're, we're providing these materials in a timely fashion. We would ask that if an approval is sought tonight, that it could be made a condition of the approval. Clearway's next step, which is very near term, is to submit an application for a stormwater permit, and those plans would reflect and be inclusive of the comments that Peter had noted as it relates to the detention day, uh, topography contours.
Yeah, I'll speak for myself. I'm not sure how the members feel in regards to that, but I'd rather see a revised set of plans go to our engineers before I act in any way on this. It's crucial if he has those plans.
Uh, Mr. Williams, this is Jeff. So I'm looking at. Uh, Mr. Williams, this is Jeff, so I'm looking at, um, their October twentieth, twenty twenty drawing that shows a modified basin on the southwest corner, and I'm seeing contours on there, so I guess help me understand what's missing, because it shows a contour at one forty-two. Uh, was there something in addition to that, one foot shallower that you're looking for?
Well, they, the actual, the, um, drainage calculations, which, you know, the performance of the detention pond is based on a stage storage relationship, and that is based on a starting elevation of one forty-one. So that is what's missing. I mean, there, there is a call out on the plan saying, you know, just a call out to one spot, calling out one forty-one, but I think it should be clear, excuse me, that the contractor has to have a defined limit for the area of the one forty-one contour, otherwise they won't have the required volume in the basin.
I see, and based on our calculations, that's the one thousand nine hundred and ten square feet at the elevation of one forty-one.
That's correct.
And that's what's missing on that drawing, with what you called up, okay, I see.
Yeah, we, we do have the, um, thank you, Mrs. Easterday. Um, as was noted, if you zoom in there, you'll see the, I call it, it's the infall or outfall, but that black square is at one forty-one contour, and what Peter has requested is that we simply include, a line around, you know, uh, to delineate that, that basin, the basin. Um, there is a call out, um, I think to write on the
Yes, to the north, yeah, right, to the north, the Yeah. Line says, says bottom one forty-one. Uh, we are working with, with, with Meridian to provide these, the new drawing with the, with the dotted one forty-one. We just couldn't back in time for this meeting, but we will supply it to Mr. Williams, uh, post, you got it, so that we can look forward with the, with the stormwater permit.
And then, um, I just wanted to know, if you scroll down, Mrs. Easterday, I believe that there's, um, a profile that also shows the one forty-one, um, base elevation.
Yes.
And so i- i- it is inclusive of the plans, but it, you know, to, uh, Peter's point, um, you know, in terms of executing this, we want to be abundantly clear with contractors that, you know, they are to dig one forty-one across the basin bottom. And so there is the value in delineating that final line.
Any of the board members have any questions of the applicants?
I still would like to ask Peter how he feels about this, if we were to approve this for them today, uh, do you think that this presents a problem for you later on? Or can we put a stipulation on there so that they can actually get going on this? And, uh, and at the same time, I, I, I guess what I'm asking for is for your advice on this, Peter.
I, it's, it's really a matter of policy, I think, um, having the correct information in for the hearing. It is, I mean, they, they do point out that it's called out into, um, uh, locations, but as Jennifer says, I always like to be, you know, completely have everything precisely shown the way it needs to be built.
All right, and as I, as I look at this drawing here, you know, the contours, uh, are, you know, are labeled, or the, the one forty-two you do see there, as for that elevation there to the right of it, one forty-four is above that, one forty-four, one forty-five dot fours to the right of that, and on and on. And if somebody's looking this, looking at this, they can see that whole bottom portion is one forty-one, so I mean, I, I think the information's here, I think it can be made clearer, uh, but I don't think we should be holding up approving that because of that one little detail, but I, I think we should, I, my opinion, I don't speak on behalf of the entire board, uh, but my opinion is, I think we should, uh, prove it conditionally, uh, on the condition that we get just a modified version of this that shows, uh, that one forty-one in that whole area on the bottom, saying that that is a bottom elevation, because it's, it's called out there, and it's also called out on the bottom, so I think that's just a, a, a drawing preference thing, and shouldn't hold it up, but my opinion.
Yeah, I would also say it is a minor risk where it is shown, and, and two locations on the plan.
And, and we're perfectly amendable to stipulation in the stormwater permit that it has to be identified with that package.
Yeah, so this, and I was just gonna say, we would be submitting our stormwater permit application, um, over next week, so, I mean, in terms of the timing and satisfying any open conditions as it relates to the special permit here, um, would be solved, you know, very quickly.
I tend to agree with, uh, Jeff on this, so, um, however, board wants to proceed is fine by me.
Mr. Woods, any comments?
I did not vote in favor of this solar farm in the first place, so I have no comment.
Alright, thank you. Alright, um, gentlemen, um, I do tend to agree with the engineer, I prefer to have our engineer have all the pertinent information. Kerry, what does our schedule look like for next month, beginning early December?
Bear with me.
Sure.
So for our next meeting for December second? Is that what you're, um, referring to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, we have nothing planned at this time.
Alright, so, um, gentlemen, I, I understand, um, the point to the board members, um, in regards to looking at the plans, I've looked at the plans myself, um, it, it needs to be tweaked, but again, I prefer our engineer, uh, Mr. Williams, to have all the information, so, um, I think it would be in the board's best interest to have our applicants come back to work on December fourth, and prior to that meeting, have all the pertinent information sent out to our engineer prior to our meeting, so that way we can vote, um, possibly vote next month, uh, for approval.
Okay, just for clarification, it's December second, not December fourth.
It would be December second.
Yes.
Any comments from the board?
None here.
Mr. Gavalo?
Uh, nothing further, no.
Alright, gentlemen, I'm going to, um, entertain a motion that we, um, place that we place Clearway, Clearway Energy Group LLC on our next agenda for December second. So Mr. Williams has all the pertinent information in regards to updated and up, if, engineering, and that way the board members also have an opportunity to look at any revisions, um, and updates that, um, needed to be made.
So, mo-
Motion has been made and seconded, uh, I'm sorry, motion has been made and has been a second by Mr. Figurito. Um, any further discussion? Gentlemen, let's vote. Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's? Aye. Um, Ms. Sherwood, and Mr. Matthews, if you could get that information out to our, um, our office manager ASAP, and that way, we, uh, Mr. Williams can also have that information. I know this is just a hiccup in, um, what you're trying to accomplish, but, um, under our policies and procedures, we need this information, we cannot go forward without it. We just cannot go by verbally, um, someone telling this information over Zoom. I'm sure you understand, and I don't believe it's gonna set you back that much, uh, being a two-week timeframe between now and then.
Good, but technically, it's, it's back, because we're now looking six weeks, but I would ask, uh, if we could provide this information to Mr. Williams ahead of the next meeting, do we have the ability to submit for our stormwater permit prior to the, the public hearing on the second?
No, you still have to go through and have all the, all information provided to us first before anything else can be forwarded to the stormwater committee.
Okay.
Because they would, just don't want a committee to be asking for our blessings in order for you to go to them, so.
Okay, so, because we, we have, we'll have this information tomorrow. So I was just trying to see if we could fast track it a little bit, but it, it sounds like we can't, but we will be able to, but roughly on the second or third, correct, once we've provided these new drawing?
We meet directly on December second at six PM.
Right, so we would, if everything goes according to plan, and we provide all the documentation, we should be able to submit on the third.
That's to the stormwater committee.
Yes, to the stormwater committee.
Correct, yeah, I'm sorry, that's why there was a hesitation, hesitation in my mind.
No, I just, I'm just trying to, to, to put everything in place, so, we're, we're trying to get a permit during the two thousand and twenty timeframe, and this, the two-week delays are, you know, making it relatively difficult. But we, we, we will have everything ready for you on the, on the second.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Matthews, um, I know that, um, you know, Massachusetts, we have, of course, the open media wire, and, uh, you know, forty-eight hour notice and that type of thing. I know, I don't know what happens in California or New Jersey or anything like that, but, you know, I know Massachusetts can be a difficult state to do business in because of such parameters.
Not a problem, I just wanna make, I have all my ducks in a row, so we can, we can try and provide you the documentation you need when you need it, so, we'll get that sent out to Williams and get his approval prior to, to the, the next meeting on the second.
Great, then we'll have everything together, and we should be ready to go.
Perfect.
Outstanding, so, uh, my desk, um, again, for the applicants, um, to please reach out to our office manager between now and our next meeting, and submit any pertinent information, and that way it can be forwarded to our engineer, and we will also be able, as board members, be able to look at, uh, any information we need to look at, so. I appreciate the applicants coming on this evening, um, I know this, um, it's been, yes.
Uh, can I ask that they send the information directly to me?
Correct, yes, if you would, Ms. Sherwood, um, and Mr. Matthews, do you have Mr. Wood's email address, I'm sure?
Yes, we do, we'll send them both.
That'd be fantastic.
Everything's taken care of, when we send it out, they'll, they'll both be CC'd on the correspondence.
Outstanding, thank you, we appreciate you guys coming on with us this, this evening.
Not a problem.
And we look forward to seeing you on December second.
Alright, you have a great holiday.
You also, thank you very much, everyone, have a great holiday, and stay safe.
Alright, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good night now.
Good night.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm actually interested in seeing, uh, listening to your trail committee presentation, but unfortunately, I have another, uh, Zoom meeting at seven, so I have to, to sign off. So, and thank you for, you know, taking, uh, them out of order, that helped me too.
Well, you're very welcome, sir.
Have a, thank, happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye.
Thank you, Peter. Good night now.
Who was that, trail committee, yeah?
Didn't show again.
They're walking the trails, no, hold on. Um, gentlemen, I'm going to, uh, now take a item, uh, agenda item four B back in order, and it's gonna be a review, discuss, and act on the site plan review for the Dayton Trails Committee, zero Somerset Avenue, map seventeen, lots twenty-two and lots twenty-three. Before Mr. Gavalo begins, he's going to recuse himself from the planning board, he will not be making a vote this evening on this, he's representing the Dayton Trails Committee. Mr. Gavalo, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Jeff Gavalo, Trails Committee. Uh, so I submitted this, uh, modern site plan, and, um, it, uh, is for a trailhead parking area, uh, behind Alice's last stop. Um, and anybody familiar with that area, uh, Somerset Avenue? Uh, there was a recent, a drainage job, uh, done by the Highway Department, uh, Tom Ferry and Company, and in the process of them installing that drainage, uh, the drainage hardware, they cleared out a section of woods, and, um, uh, talking back with Mr. Ferry some, uh, probably a year or so ago, he mentioned this, this project was, uh, in the works, and that we might consider, uh, doing something like this in that area. Uh, so this, this drawing here is a little dated, uh, it actually says on the top there, ten December twenty nineteen is when we first, uh, started thinking about this, so they'll be kicking this around a little bit. Uh, but what you're looking at there, uh, the proposed parking area has got the, uh, it's a white box with the red hash on there. Uh, we're looking at something that's gonna be for, uh, four to five spots, uh, and, uh, and of note, all of that land called out there, and you'll see the bottom left box there, surrounding properties owned by the town of Dayton. Uh, all those boxes are in blue, that's all town of Dayton property. Um, what's happening is, uh, you've got that, uh, future, um, Department of Conservation and Recreation, Sweet Snoll Trail that's going to come down and terminate on Somerset Ave, uh, and that's part of the Sweet Snoll rail trail that they're eventually going to put in. Uh, they, they've actually got the funding for that, uh, they got funded the design and engineering funding for that. Uh, this is the bottom most terminating point, and from here it goes two miles north. Uh, so it's, it's gonna be a pretty good thing once, once it gets put into town. Um, but in preparation for that, we wanted to start talking about, you know, where people would be able to put their, park their cars and, and not park illegally, and this would be a nice place to put a parking area, as well as a trailhead. Uh, and then also, one thing we're thinking about is using that, uh, existing rail bed that is there, and it is actually cleared, to put in that proposed, uh, trail, that green line, green trail that goes all the way down to the waterfront. Uh, that green thing is, it's a separate thing altogether, we're working through the Conservation Committee, uh, to, to look into that. Uh, but what this hearing is for, what this minor site plan is, is focused on is that proposed parking area. Uh, so right now it's shown there, and, um, I've got photographs I can send later on of what that kinda looks like, but it, it, like I mentioned, it is cleared already, uh, and parkable, but, uh, we'd like to make it official, and that's what this is proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Gavalo. Uh, members, before we vote, I just wanna refresh everyone's mind that, uh, we had just done one of these, um, down the street on, uh, from my home, on Main Street, at the Lane Field, the parking area there. Um, and that was, of course, a minor site plan review, and that's all based on the amount of parking spaces, so with the minimum amount of parking spaces that, uh, the Trails Committee is presenting this evening, of five, that, um, I believe that, um, this should be very easily passed. So, gentlemen, uh, do you have any questions of the applicants? Mr. Figurito?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Woods?
Well, the parking lot is already put in. Correct?
Oh, there's an area that's cleared, he cleared it for the, for the trees, but we wanna level it off and probably put some
Already too, there, there's some kind of a surface on there.
Yeah, I think he's spread stone or something on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, um, crushed asphalt down.
Oh, there is, okay.
So, what exactly are you asking for, seeing it's already there?
Make it official.
I, I wanna make it official and, uh, and, and get the blessing, and then, uh, eventually put a trailhead marker on there to make it, uh, not just a cleared area that has material in it.
Okay, and, and what about the trestle that this trail is gonna lead to, that, that there's no railings on, and it looks pretty unsafe?
Um, I don't, what trestle, what, what is that, I'm sorry?
The trestle, if you're heading north down the rail bed, there's a trestle, you know, where the train used to go over the water, they call them a trestle?
Behind, um, behind, um, the tennis courts and, um, Gotten Tire, right around that area.
Oh, that's, that's way north, that's, uh, the, uh, DCR is supposed to develop that, they're gonna probably put, um, well, like, uh, have you seen the elevated rails that they did in Fall River, where it'll be an actual bridge, probably paved, uh, with railing eventually.
Right, the way it is right now is very dangerous.
Right, that's, that's actually state property, so it's got nothing to do with us, unfortunately. We, we, we can't do anything to it.
The little pocket lot that you're talking about here, and the trail, i- it's only less than a quarter of a mile to that trestle.
Right, and it's, it's actually something that a lot of residents get access to, not really from here, they get access to it from the Sweet Snoll State Park.
Right, well, I, I'm very familiar with their property, um, and, and I think it's a danger. And unless something's gonna be done with that trestle, I mean, even, you know, I'm, I'm up that way a lot in my boat, and I see adults that have trouble walking across that trestle. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just thinking of safety.
Right, I, I agree, something's gonna have to be done with it, uh, and that, that's, that's on DCR's, uh, radar to develop.
Yeah, that's, uh, go ahead, Mr. Woods, I'm sorry, but that's
What exactly are we approving tonight, or what do you want us to approve?
I'm only focused on the parking area, yeah.
Just the parking area?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
But that's just gonna give people an area to park to walk down to something that's dangerous. And it's very dangerous, I mean, a- and when the current is pulling out of there, if some kid ever fell off, the water's pretty deep there, you know? It, it would be It it would be very dangerous, is what I'm saying. You know, unless something's done to that trestle and a bridge is made and it's made safe. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a parking lot there, you're just looking for trouble.
Hopefully my brother picked the home phone up.
Boy, that sounds like an old phone, dude.
Yeah, we do have a land, yes, it's rotary, it's rotary too, as a matter of fact.
I bet it is.
Also, back to, so I want to get back to the subject matter at hand. Mr. Woods, I understand your point, that's that's not in the purview of what the Trails Committee is asking for. I I what do I do, I understand exactly where you're coming from, I walked that as a kid and it is highly dangerous, but. Maybe. In the meantime, I don't know if something can be done by the town, if the town owns property, there possibly a butt set, they can put some type of, you know. Even a temporary snow fence up there so people don't walk that far down. That type of thing, but again, we're only here to approve. The minor site plan review for five parking spaces, four to five spots. Well. Figurito, you look, you're ready to say something?
No, I was just going to say I'll make a motion to approve it, you know, it's if the property don't belong to us and we don't, we don't have. Any. We don't have to do anything with it, it's not our property, it's not the town property.
Correct.
Maybe they want to put some concrete bounds or I don't know, just something to block it off. So that people don't go that way, that's that's.
It's not in that preview, so I I just want to let the members. Know this right now that we are a composition of a five-member board. And three constitutional quorum, three voting members must vote in the affirmative for this to pass. So I just want to put that out there because we have one member right now who has recused himself of the season, this evening's meeting. So again, this is going to have to be, you know. A majority of whomever may be left. So, Mr. Figurito, you've made a motion to accept the minor site plan review which presented?
Yes.
At this time, I'm going to, Andy, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
What are you still thinking?
Down. I'm going to step down and second that motion. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none, let's vote. By roll, Mr. Figurito.
Aye.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Woods?
You're still muted.
Nay. Mr. Ryan's eye. That fails. Two votes to one, we need a majority. All right.
If you look at the mission statement for the planning board, public safety is our number one responsibility.
Nope, I completely understand.
Well, you didn't vote that way.
Yeah, but the situation is public safety, Mr. Woods, that is a separate area of property owned by the state of Massachusetts, it's not in the town of Dayton's purview. To reach out and go over and above what the state needs to do, that's that's state property, there's nothing we can do. Unless, again, I asked earlier that maybe. Tom Ferry can go down there and put up some type of a barrier to block in the meantime, I don't know, I don't know how they would do that.
And then again, they built the parking area before they even asked us. Okay, I'm just trying to get a couple of points across here, nothing against Jeff.
No, you are.
Trail Committee.
No, I understand that.
Public safety is my number one concern.
All right, fair enough, heard loud and clear, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, that was a two to one. Two votes in affirmative, one in the negative, and unfortunately, the motion does not carry because we do not have. A majority vote of three out of five. So. Mr. Gavalo, I don't know what your next step would be in regards to this, maybe you can go back and present this to us. In the future, maybe with some information from the state in regards to what they would do for safety issues that Mr. Woods had addressed in regards to the trestle. That type of thing.
Yeah, we're actually in conversations with Paul Janigie from the state. So I can float this by him and then. See what he thinks and then we can talk to. Mr. Ferry to see if there's something we can do, but. I'll 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 table, I'll shelf this for now, we'll we'll come back to this after.
Okay, all right, thank you. Gentlemen, we'll move on to the next agenda item is four D and inside your packet. We're going to review discussing act to set the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule. Now. I want everybody to know that Mrs. Easter Day has. Put in a lot of work in regards to this and you're going to look at the meeting schedule. And this is something, this is just a little, a little nude, it's going to be attached to everything that's going on, and this is going to be the, so the applicants know. What our deadlines are. And what the, when the formal deadlines are to be presented to us prior to a meeting. So I, Carrie, I like the way this is put out, put out together. And this way, again, any applicants who do come into us, they're going to know what our deadlines are in regards to information we need to look at prior to our meetings. So she is, Mrs. Easter Day is now putting up the proposed schedule. You gentlemen can see that on the top left, you'll see the meeting dates is our set meeting. And then you're going to see the application deadlines and then the formal deadlines. So. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion, Carrie, this. Does this reflect us, yes, it does, does this reflect our summer schedule also?
No, it does not, we typically do not do our summer schedule until when we get closer to the date, when everyone is more solidified with their summer plans. So I determine whether it's best to meet at the beginning of the month or the middle of the month. That's typically how we address the summer schedule, we usually do that sometime in, you know, late May, early June. And then.
Okay, thank you.
Once that's determined, then I revise the schedule and repost it.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, you have any questions of our office manager?
Well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
No, just don't forget about our summer schedule.
Oh, I would never do that. I like that summer schedule too.
Uh, no, it looks good, matter of fact, I did ask Carrie about the summer schedule, I'm like, wait a minute, there's two a month, this doesn't seem right.
I think that was, so that's been unanimous that we're all looking at where the summer schedule is, so.
Right, right.
So, gentlemen, I'm going to. So, gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the. Twenty twenty-one meeting schedule as set by our office manager, Mrs. Easter Day.
I'll make that motion, I'll motion propose schedule of the meetings. To accept.
Do I hear it, do I hear it second?
I'll second.
Which is made in second by Mr. Woods, any further discussion on the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one, hearing none, let's vote by roll, Mr. Figurito.
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's eye. Gentlemen, we're going to move on to agenda item number five and that's, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October twenty-first of twenty twenty.
Forgive me, Chairman Ryan's, there's a correction on that as well, that's meeting minutes of November fourth.
That's right, you did tell me that this afternoon, it escaped my memory. No, you did tell me that this afternoon, thank you.
Okay, strikes again.
Yeah.
So that's going to be to approve the meeting minutes of November fourth of twenty twenty.
Make that motion?
Motion made, do I hear it second, motion been made in second, and any further discussion? Are you doing sign language over there, Mr. Woods?
No, I'm putting away all my papers.
Okay.
It's yoga. Cleaning house.
I just wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if you had the light on, you're making a little like, you know. Hand things, you know, okay. So, gentlemen, there's been a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November fourth, it's been second. Any further discussion, let's vote by roll, Mr., I'm sorry, did we already do this, Carrie, already vote?
I just need the roll call.
Okay, Mr. Figurito?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's eye, Mrs. Easter Day, any correspondence for this month?
Yes, I have two pieces of correspondence, the first one is Autumn Heights of Rehoboth, Massachusetts. Has announced their affordable housing lottery. The S E B Housing is currently working with Autumn Heights Mass Housing in the town of Rehoboth to provide affordable housing for sale. To provide affordable for sale housing. Enclosed is a flyer for affordable housing opportunity, the lottery is being marketed through multiple affirmative in local newspapers in addition to mailings done to local religious institutions and social organizations. Hope you'll be able to make this information available via any avenues of distribution that you see fit. If you'd like more information or have questions or would like to receive an information packet. An application, you can call six one seven seven eight two twenty-three hundred, extension two zero nine. And the information is also available on their website at S E B housing dot com, affordable housing opportunities. And that's from Samaya Donovan of Needham. So if anyone has any questions or concerns or would like some information, they can. I do believe the selectmen posted on their website. And or they can give me a call and I'll be happy to forward a copy of the flyer. The next item that I have is just a notice of intent from the Conservation Commission. That zero Montero Drive, which is going to be a new house. Is being proposed and it's just a notice of intent for a septic system site plan. For a lot that's already designated over in that subdivision. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the correspondence is read by our office manager. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion on the reading of the correspondence by our office manager? Hearing none, let's vote by roll, Mr. Figurito.
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's eye, gentlemen. I'm going to move on to agenda item number seven, Carrie, do we have any public input for this evening?
I have no public input.
Gentlemen, as I just wanted to say this on the public input, and I did say this early, I just want to repeat this. I have gone out and looked at a few of the subdivisions in town, I was up at Wellington. The state earlier, Tommy's Way, Billy's Lane, I did a little investigation. There's a company up there right now, working on the punch list items that we have requested, which would be the handicap. Accessible areas and also some footage of sidewalk, and I believe they're working on a few brims, as far as I know, they have done the aprons for the driveways that we requested. Now, in regards to the lighting internally. I think they're still working on that, the exterior lighting, I believe that the homeowners association is working with the electric light district and we're waiting for those results to come back down to us from what the decision was. Within in regards to what, where those lights are going to be and, you know, who's going to pay for them, that type of thing. That's out of our purview because they're with, not within the bounds of the subdivision itself. I did have an opportunity to go by Marish Lane. And they have worked on the walls for the causeway, putting the stone in. It looks pretty good, it's not complete yet, but it looks pretty decent. There is a house that's been built on the lot that we approved. And also they have cleaned up the. Areas at that location and put a lot of their. Overburden and that type of thing in the northeast. I'm sorry, in the east side, more in the northerly corner of that property, there is silt fence up to the west. Of the causeway that's been up for a while, they haven't cut any more trees or anything like that in there. So that looks pretty good. In regards to Jennifer Lane, to let the members know, that came up at Monday night's town meeting, that road was accepted by the residents. So I think that's just about it from what I have. And any of the members have any public input?
No, neither.
Mr. Figurito?
No, I don't.
Mr. Woods, you have anything?
No.
Mr. Gavalo?
Uh, no, I don't have anything, but I do have a question for Carrie, that stuff I sent. That was information, one of the items that Mr. Ryan's was just talking about, the lighting for this subdivision I live in. I'm assuming. That's just information for you and and answer some of those questions.
I haven't had a chance, I was going to forward that off to the board after our meeting.
Yeah, so hopefully Mr. Ryan said that answers some of the lighting questions you you brought up for Cedar Estates.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gavalo, I appreciate that.
Forgive me, remember Carlo, he forwarded some meeting minutes and some information from the electric light districts, which I think will light, enlighten everyone on what transpired.
Be very illuminating.
Yeah. And so. Yeah, maybe we can go find a a direction to go from there.
I worked all day on that pun.
I I saw the look on your face. That was great. Mrs. Easter Day and members of the board, before we adjourn, I probably will not have the opportunity to see many of you before our holiday, which is Thanksgiving next Thursday. And I'd just like to wish my board members and our office manager a wonderful Thanksgiving with your families, if you can, please, you know. Be safe, be cognizant of others, but, you know, enjoy the turkey as much as you can.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving to you as well, Mr. Gavalo, and your family and everyone. So, gentlemen, with no other public inputs. I'm going to, before we adjourn, just a reminder that our next meeting is December 2nd of twenty twenty. So I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Motion made in second, and Jeff, before we adjourn, do you have my home phone number, or my, I'm sorry, my cell number?
Yes, I do.
Would you give me a call, please, after the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you, gentlemen, it's been a motion to adjourn in the second, any further discussion on adjournment? Hearing and seeing none, let's vote, Mr. Figurito by roll.
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gavalo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's eye, Cable, thank you as always, Mrs. Easter Day. Have a great night.
Thanks, guys, sorry for the technical difficulties.
That's fine, we get everything straightened out. Thanks.